On to item number three, ZBA 24-24, 2646 Colorado Avenue. Single-member district number five, Karen Hesse Smith. A request for approval of variance from section 402, point A, point two of the zoning ordinance for an accessory building size of 912 square feet in lieu of the maximum 764 square feet located at 2646 Colorado Avenue.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
Austin Reed, planner. So this request comes to you out of the Santa Rita neighborhood. We're in district number five, Karen Hesse Smith's district. Can you not hear me very well? How about now? Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. We are in the Santa Rita neighborhood in district number five, Karen Hesse Smith's district. This is RS1 zoning, point two acres. And what we have, as you mentioned, is a request for approval of an accessory building size of 912 square feet in lieu of the maximum 764. We did mail out 23 notifications. We received one in favor and five who were opposed. Onto our analysis. So the home here, of course, is existing, but there is an accessory structure in the back that was built without permits by a previous owner sometime in the past couple of years. An accessory structure, just so you know, is allowed to be 50% of the home's livable area, and obviously, we're over that here. The use of the structure is or will be in office and guest quarters. The owners may be looking to operate a short-term rental at this address, so, you know, tenants could occupy this space. The surrounding neighbors seem to abide by accessory building size requirements, and there's a lack of special circumstances particular to the lot, so we weren't able to find all the necessary criteria for granting a variance have been met. I've included the survey and some plans for your reference, and I can flip back to these in a second, but we are recommending denial if you have any other questions I can, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Does the board have any questions?
So is there an application for short-term rental at this time?
There has been, but that was put on hold for the variance. So if they receive approval here, they'll go for the conditional use. Really, if they received denial here, I think they'll work around it and still go for the conditional use. So, yeah.
Either way, they're...
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other question? I have one. How long, they have bought the property, I guess, I assume?
Yes, sir.
How long have they owned it?
Not very long, not more than a year or two.
Is applicant here? Okay, just a sec. I was reading staff reports over the weekend, and the contract, something in there, I can't find it.
Can you just speak into your mic, Karen?
Yeah, okay, sorry. I'm looking and talking at the same time, much like chewing gum and walking for me at the same time, you know? The, there was something in the staff report that I can't find about the contract, it was in there as-as-is. You remember that?
Yeah. They purchased the property and inherited the accessory structure.
And, I'm sorry?
The previous owner built the accessory structure. They bought it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What determined it as-is?
Generally, it will determine it as-is as the building states. So, they're not going to either do certain repairs, make, let's say, put a pole in, like, certain things. So, as-is has a lot of generalizations as to where we come from on that, but if that building was already, the structure was already there without permit, then, and they purchased it that way, that generally deems nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Okay. So that, as-is, is just kind of a boilerplate thing that staff uses to put on the staff report? They don't see the contracts?
No.
I don't think that was in the staff report. I think that's in the flyer that the opponents to their requests, they passed out like a one-page...
No, and I thought I printed it all out, printed everything else out, but I can't...
As real estate agents, we put it in as-is if a certain seller isn't willing to deem repairs or certain things, but it's going to depend on if it's going to go conventional. I mean, there's a lot of terminology that comes into that. As-is should have nothing to do with this.
So y'all, the staff or the city's not interested? They don't see the contracts or the...
No. I mean, I don't think anything was implied by that language. It was just the language that was chosen.
Okay, okay. I'm with you. I didn't think you did. That's the reason I was bringing it up. If you don't see the seller's disclosure notice or anything like that, so, okay. All right, that's answered my question.
Yep.
Any more?
I got a question.
Sure.
How did he build something without a permit? Something a structure that big and it's oversized and everything? I know that generally, if you start building something, the city passes by and they'll red-tag you right away. How can you build something so big and get away with it?
It's in the rear yard, which is probably what helps them to got away with it.
I'll tell you what, at one time, I knew a person that was building something, and it was enclosed inside a building, and it got red-tagged with the doors closed and everything. That's, that's just not, can't they hear all the construction going on?
Well, a lot of the times, code compliance operates on a complaint basis, and in this situation, likely, no one noticed or sent in a complaint until it had already been constructed.
And another question I got to ask you is, when a house is sold and bought or whatever, don't they check that everything was built to specs or permits or whatever?
In a perfect world, yes.
No, we do not.
No?
No.
Is that maybe the little clause, as-is?
No. As a selling agent or a buyer's agent, you can go back and look at previous things such as fences and stuff like that, but generally, as agents, we do not go back and look at certain permits that were done and certain, that is, like, dependently on the actual owner. So you're just representing either a buyer that's coming in and so forth, but no, it, generally, that does not happen.
Okay. One other question. The guy who sold it to the other person, how long did they keep it before they put it on the market to sell it?
I would not know the answer to that question.
It's probably a disclosure that, I mean, the public can look, well, not the public, but you can probably look that up on the deeds, but it won't really generally have that.
Yeah. Over and out.
Any more question?
So, just to clarify on this, they, they bought the property with the property, with the, it already on there, and now they're asking for the zoning because it was already on there?
Yes.
So they're proper, the new, the new applicants are properly doing it compared to the old applicants that already built it, and it's there, and so the new applicants are taking the proper process to actually apply for something that's already existing on their property?
That's correct. The current owner and applicant did not construct the accessory structure. They're just here to get the variance for it since they already bought the property and learned that it was out of compliance.
That's strange.
The maximum is 764 square feet for this property?
Yes, and that should come out to 50% of the livable area of the home.
Okay. I thought it was a little more than that.
So if we were to, let's say, the board were to deny it on something they have already purchased and already have, I think I have to tear that down on something that they purchased based on the price that they purchased it at, and the building was already existing there?
I mean, they could modify the structure, they could tear it down, that's up to them. I mean, really, even you could increase the floor area of the home, and that would put it under the 50%. There's a few options there. That's, yeah.
That's the only thing I see. They didn't encroach to the side or back property lines too close?
No, they're fine with setbacks.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open for public comment. Anyone from the public may step up and state your name and comment on the situation.
Yes, good afternoon. I am the owner. We purchased, my name is Fernando Elscher, and I apologize, I'm not very good at public speaking, but I do want to do a short statement. I'd like to thank the city staff. They've tried to help us as much as they could through this whole process. We purchased this property roughly around four months ago, maybe three and a half, and within the first four weeks, we got a notice that there were several violations in the property, not only this one. We have been able to work with the city and got the other ones approved. This is the only one that they couldn't approve because it falls beyond their jurisdiction. The rules are set, and they, they're basically being brainstorming with us on how to fix this problem, and we've come up with four potential solutions. One, making the house bigger. Two, turn it completely down. Three, asking for some flexibility for an exception on this case. And four, opening two walls out of that structure and somehow reinforcing it, moving electrical and walls and part of the roofing, not to tear the whole thing down. It is true that we bought it this way. We were under the impression that all the permits and all the necessary documents and all the codes and laws of the city and the state were done properly. We found out that that was not exactly true. It does have a new survey from when we bought the property, and the new survey has the building in the back that was approved by a different department and city. I believe we're paying taxes on the new square footage of the house. The house also got a facelift from the inside, the top, the back. Everything got redone from the previous owners. The previous owners lived in this property for over a year before they decided to sell it. And I have one more thing I'd like to bring up. I have an email from Charlie Kemp from the city where the numbers were run based on the tax appraisal, the tax appraisal and the survey, and we are 90 feet off of the amount of square footage that we're allowed. Carving out 90 feet from a building, it's not very easy, and so we thought that perhaps we could ask for some flexibility in this particular case. It does come of a big burden to us to tear it down or lose the whole property or expand the property or try to structurally change the property. Not only time and efforts, but also financials. Are there any questions from all the questions you guys had that I could answer?
I do. When you signed the contract, did the seller give you a disclosure notice?
Yes.
About seven pages worth?
There is a disclosure.
Yeah, but do you have it, do you have a copy with you?
I don't have a copy with me.
Okay.
Today.
You know, one of the, on page four of section eight, it says, "Rooms addition, structural modification, or other alterations repaired made without necessary permits with unresolved permits or not in compliance with building codes in effect of the," at that time. Do you remember seeing that checked?
I remember having that checked, yes.
And what'd they check? No?
They checked that all the permits were obtained.
I'm sorry?
All the permits were obtained.
So they...
They notified you that... They notified you that all permits were obtained?
The disclosure has a yes or a no, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
And apparently, the yes is the one that was checked.
So...
We did run this through our...
That was misrepresentation on their part.
We, we did run this through our attorney, and our attorney, that was the first thing he asked. That's the only reason why I know this particular document.
Okay.
And I don't know that there is any proof that that was done or not done, but that was my understanding.
Okay, but you...
I don't have it with me. That is correct.
We can obtain that if necessary.
Yeah. So you've been, by this form here, there's misrepresentation. Do you know if the previous owners built that building?
Yes.
They did?
Yes, they did. I know them personally. They've been trying to help us. They hired a third party to do it for them, and they were also under the impression that that third party had done everything correctly.
All right. But they are trying to help you, really?
Yes, they are trying to help us. Yes. They actually helped us with the other, and they've been to the city with us, and they've done to their courtesy whatever they could.
Okay.
Do you know if the, is it to code, everything but the size?
I believe so. There is electrical that was not done to code or had no permit, or the permit was not finalized or something of that sort, and it was finalized after the purchase because of our request to them to help us out.
It is to code? I'm sorry, I was...
Yes, I believe it is to code. When we've, when we first purchased, among the other things, that we're not permitted or were partially permitted or, or not finalized was one of the electrical permits specifically for that back structure, and when we informed them, they informed the electrician, the electrician was able to complete it and...
It was pulled, it just wasn't finalized.
I don't know the technicalities, but something of that sort.
How would they pull electrical permits without being a permit? A regular permit underneath it?
So you can pull an electrical permit to replace a panel. You don't have to generally specify exactly where it's going if it's replacing a panel or adding a panel. It's not specifically implying on the building that it's on.
Okay.
Generally, they can do that.
That's correct. So mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits can be pulled over the counter. There's not really a plan that goes with them.
Okay.
And in this case, I know that...
So it won't have on their new construction or anything like that?
Right. So there's nothing to imply that there was new construction at the time as far as a new structure. I do know that the building official and assistant building official have been out to the site and did look at the structure and did believe that the structure would meet the building codes. It's just too large is the, it's a, meets a zoning ordinance issue of being too large.
Just the 90 feet instead of the 140-something that was, that was documented here.
The staff agree with that? 90 instead of 140?
Yeah, and I don't know if that makes a big difference for you guys, but I'd like to say that 90 feet is roughly around the size between these two desks. You know, it, it's a size to, difficult to carve out of a building without having structural and other problems.
Yeah, it's possible there's a difference there between what was notified and is on your agenda and what's actually needed. He's asking for less than we notified for, so that's fine.
Okay. Interesting. Well, any questions for the applicant?
Any other questions I may answer? Thank you.
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We are still open for public comment. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Could this step on up? State your name, please, sir, for the record.
David Harlow.
David.
2634 Colorado. I live at 2634 Colorado, which is two houses to the east of this property. The structure is easily visible from my backyard. I'm opposed to granting a variance from section 402 dot A dot two of the zoning ordinance for an, for an accessory building size. The accessory building size of 912 square feet is in excess of the maximum size allowed according to the information that we've received by over 19%, which I feel is excessive. The city of San Angelo has set rules and regulations related to requirements necessary to maintain or improve value of property in the city. These rules are intended to be used to maintain certain quality of living for all citizens of the city. These rules are intended to be used by all citizens of the city. These rules were not followed when the accessory building was constructed at 2646 Colorado. The building was not only built to a size which is in excess of the size allowed, it was built without obtaining a permit. In fact, other changes were made to the property without obtaining necessary permits. Finally, the property was used as a short-term rental without obtaining a license to do so. I am opposed to the request for variance in building size.
When was it used as a short-term rental?
Pardon?
When was it used as a short-term rental?
I believe like in May of this year.
May, okay. All right.
Did you happen to oppose it whenever it was actually built by the previous owners? Did this become an issue then, whenever it was built by the previous owners?
Previous owner did not use it as a short-term rental.
But when it was built and it was adherenced and visibly...
The accessory building.
Able to see the accessory building?
Did I, I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
That, was it, did you oppose that whenever it was originally built from the previous owners?
The, no, but the, the, there was a lot of construction going on there, and I am not conversant with the rules and regulations in, in, in construction. That's not, that's not what I do. So I'm not, I didn't go around saying, "Did you get a permit for this?" That's just not, it didn't feel like that was merited.
I understand.
So you found out about it when they send out the notices, 200-feet notice, making, making the neighborhood aware that there's a problem? Is that when you found out about it?
I found out about it when I, when it became, when it became, when I became aware of the fact that it was using as short-term rental, because, like I say, we live two houses from that, that property, and there were cars, several cars at this 2646 location. So I approached the city, the, the compliance department, and I said, "It looks, you could see it on Airbnb." And I said, "I thought we were supposed to be informed if there was going to be a change in use from single-family resident to short-term rental." And the gentleman that I was working with said, "You did not receive a notice," and I said, "No." And then he, he looks and sure enough, there was no license for a short-term rental.
I see. Okay. Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Fernando Elscher again. I'd like to add a comment to answer some of the information brought up by the gentleman. Yes, as soon as we purchased the property, we applied for an STR, and we put it up on STR webpage. We lived in this house to try to make it appropriate, and it was notified to us that it was not until we get approved that we can do it, so we have since then ceased to do STRs in it, and that still...
So you were living there and then using it as like a garage apartment-type STR?
No, no, the whole property, the intention for the whole property to be used as an investment property. We have tried to do long-term rental for now, and we're thinking that in the near future, when our parents are in the need of coming closer to us, which is coming up soon, is where we're going to put them up.
The STR is not on the agenda anyway. Yeah, we're just, okay.
Yes, and, and this particular building has been there for over a year. It has nothing to do with the STR, perhaps the STR is what red-flagged it to our neighbors, but it's been there all this time.
Yes. Yeah, that's what's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Still open for public comment? Any more comment from the public? State your name, please, for the record.
My name is Vanessa Boyd, and I'm doing business as V2K. Mr. Harlow hired me to speak on his behalf about the variance request, and we would like to support Mr. Reed's recommendation to deny the variance. One, because of the size, that it is significant. If you go off of the appraisal website, square footage is, I know there's a difference between the notification, but based on what we see, it's between 19 and 28% larger than, than the code would allow, and that feels significant. The second is that there's a lot of language that the variance would not be allowed, actually, and we feel that this is wise, that the city of San Angelo code does not allow a variance to be granted to relieve an applicant of conditions or circumstances that are self-imposed or that are grounded solely on the opportunity to make a property more profitable or to reduce expense to the owner. And this is chapter 12, exhibit A, article two, section 207E. It additionally states that to grant a variance based on unnecessary hardship requires that the special circumstances on the property are atypical, but the property conditions were not the cause of this violation. A variance must affirmatively find that any special circumstances are not the result of the actions of the applicant. In this case, the buyer is alerted through the Texas Real Estate Commission seller's disclosure agreement, as well as the real estate inspection report, which had measurements. The decision must carry out a spirit of substantial justice, and to achieve substantial justice for the neighborhood property owners, we believe the size must be reduced. While the state of Texas local government code does include a statement allowing a board to consider excessive cost for remedy, AKA hardship, it specifies that this consideration is only to be made after verifying the variance is not contrary to public interest and is due to special conditions, including the fact that the municipality considers the structure to be a non-conforming structure. We believe that hardship does not apply in this case. Unnecessary hardship is defined as greater than 50% of the appraised value shown on the most recent appraisal roll. However, the improvements are not reported by the Tom Green County Appraisal District, and the appraised value showing online for 2023 and 2024 are only for a principal building listed as 1,448 square foot. Though at the appraised value, the 50% budget is $50,000 and $525. We feel like this is by law, by code, more than enough to cover the cost of remedying the size of the accessory structure, and we believe that hardship is a moot point. We request that the ZBA oppose the request for variance and to require the applicant to reduce the size to comply with code. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No questions? You said, you mentioned the seller's disclosure. Did you see a copy of the seller's disclosure?
We have not, but I had also seen that same language that the buyer has made aware, even if the person were to check no, no or yes, the buyer has made aware through that disclosure that this is an issue.
As such as, how would it be made aware?
Because it says in there that exact language that you were reading earlier. It says, "Any additions, modifications may be made without adherence to code or permits."
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify one thing? We're talking a lot about it, the contract and these forms and all that. We don't, unless we have their exact contract, you really shouldn't be considering outside forms and all of that, because those can be modified by the parties.
Right.
So while that is the standard format and that's in there, I wouldn't put too much consideration in that.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't think it's pertinent to this case?
Not unless we have their actual contract, their actual disclosure.
Okay, all right.
We would like for them to, to pursue that, you know, through, through the law there, but for you guys to, to deny the variance in this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still open for public comment? Any more comment from the public? Name for the record, please, sir?
Jamal Shumpert, single-member district number three.
Hi, Jamal.
How you doing, Mr. Cortez?
All right.
I'm very curious whether this case has merits in this court or whether they were supposed to be catching a fine, because if this all triggered from a short-term rental, then maybe they skipped the fine, maybe I misunderstood it. From what he said, that he got a notification for a short-term rental, I'm guessing he may be the guy who put in the, the thing that triggered it for the whole discussion about his oversized accessory building.
Not sure.
I'm not, they said code compliance was the reason, but I'm not sure if they received a ticket for that or if y'all are here today to address that through a different alternative method. That's, that's what I was asking.
We're just here on the accessory building.
Yeah, yeah, but they also had a short-term rental that...
That's separate.
That's completely separate.
Yeah, it is completely separate, nothing to do with you guys. But if that is the reason code compliance came there and the reason he's actually opposing it, it comes, it seems like maybe they should have got a fine for that, and then they should be here, but nobody said they got a fine for it for operating a short-term rental.
Whether it be the case or not, right now, the actual thing that's on the agenda is specifically the variance request, and that's what we're going to address.
Yeah, and addressing...
Staff, you want to address that?
Yeah, I'm happy to address that, Chairman Cortez. And generally, even if it is a complaint-based investigation, the applicants have every ability to come into compliance without a citation under the code. Under the code enforcement rules, there's a certain amount of time that they have to do things to come into compliance. These current property owners have stopped operating as a short-term rental, so they have come into compliance, they have submitted an application, and so they're trying to solve their problems. So we rarely would issue a citation in that manner, uh, because we are trying to work with people in the entire community and, and work through whatever those issues through the proper channels.
Okay, thank you.
That's exact, yep, he's 100% correct. That's why I was wondering if, uh, maybe, you know, that was going on here. Uh, and Mr. Vannor, I know I can't ask you a question. If this all fails, uh, and they find no remedy, do they receive a ticket then or do they, what, they go in, because if they knock it over, they won't be out of compliance? Or if they change it, they won't be out of compliance, so they won't receive a ticket?
I think the general, the general answer is it depends on what violation still exists. If they've asked for some time to modify the structure via permit or if they've asked for a demolition permit or other remedies, then we would still continue to work with them. Um, I couldn't say definitively if they would or would not ever be issued a citation for the current violations that are existing.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wanted to clear it up for everybody, especially for him, because as long as they're out of compliance, he's going to send it to code compliance and it'll be a repetitive thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal.
We appreciate your comment, thank you.
Any more public comment? There being none, I'm going to close public comment.
Okay, Board. So do I understand correctly that regardless of the outcome of the STR request, the building is still out of compliance?
It was out of compliance when he purchased it.
And if they get STR approved, it's still out of
Yes.
Out of, out of size, oversized.
Yes, 764 square feet is general
Yeah, what I'm trying to say is the, the STR has nothing to do
No, no, we're not even, we're not debating the STR.
Got it.
Yeah, it's mainly just the specific size of the building
Right.
That they already purchased previously and whether it was disclosed or undisclosed, that's a legal
On the same page.
Debate on that end, it's, they purchased something with the wherewithal and knowledge of that they were purchasing, I think that already had the permits and everything else. They buy a building that was already oversized.
Okay, yeah, I'm good. Okay. More commentary from the Board? Not, I'm going to ask for motion.
This is one that, uh, doesn't really sit good. However, unfortunately, the rules in the situation are the rules in the situation. I'm going to move that we support the denial as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for denial? Go for the vote unless we want to talk about it some more. Any discussion on the motion from the Board?
I think we talk about it for a minute because I don't, like, I, I want everyone, like, I kind of want everyone to, I'd rather talk about it.
Okay.
Sure.
When you purchase something and you look at a survey, you look at what you're getting, um, whether it's me personally purchasing it or it's representing a client, you're depending on that. Um, I, I understand how the rules work and I will always obey the law and do things like that, but my question is, is what other options do we have without them having to tear that down when they bought something under the impression that they bought it with everything done? And, I mean, generally publicly, we can pull the seller's disclosure and, and look at that, like, if that's what they were basing it on legally, why should we make them tear that down when legally that that's what they were, their, their knowledge was that's what they were buying? That was okay.
They have to reduce it now. They don't tear it down.
So then what's the, so let's look at our options when we say denial. Where are, where do those options open up to? Austin, or not Austin?
No, I know who you meant. So even pulling the seller's disclosure, the legal situation that they're in, I mean, that's a civil matter that they would need to work out. I certainly couldn't give you advice on what legal rights or remedies they may or may not have because I only represent the city. So I think just be careful about, you know, considering that.
That's why I'm being careful, that's why I'm asking.
Well, there's other options he could do. He could open up both back walls and leave it the same, what, and then, what was that to, you know?
Well, if you build it back there and then they have to ask for a variance that's closer to the back fence, that will be within so many feet of the fence line.
They, they do have
If you look at the survey, that's within the 25 feet, they're already right there, they have to ask for a variance to do that too.
There are several other options, and I say several, I, that may be overstating. There are other options. This is a deep lot, it's 150 feet deep and so their 20-foot setback from the rear also has an alley and so there are some options to potentially add to the current house structure, which ups their percentage of, so if RS1 zoning allows you to do a 50%, uh, up to a 50% accessory structure, and as long as that structure is, um, more than 10 feet away, then it becomes an accessory structure. If it's connected with some kind of canopy or something, then it becomes the primary structure, then they run into a setback issue. And so we're trying to work with them. We did discuss even talking about how do they make part of the structure an open structure so it's not part of the living space, so it doesn't count towards the, uh, living space 50%? Uh, so how can we get, help them get that number down? The challenge is, and I think we all feel for the people that bought the property, is that it's all, that something is going to cost money to them. Uh, it's going to cost more money than what they thought they were going to have to put in to this property to make it usable. Uh, and that, that's the challenging part for all of us because morally, we all think, well, this, we got to find some way to do this to help them, but our zoning ordinance was set up for everyone and so we have to follow what our zoning ordinance, our codes say to make sure that we're protecting everyone the same way.
Thank you. Yeah, no, 90 feet.
I don't like it either. I know, I don't like that.
Any more? Any more commentary? Okay, the motion is to deny, it's still on the table?
Yep.
Motion and a second.
We're ready to go to the vote? All right, let's go to the vote. Motion to denial, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It's been denied, all right. Where's my, what was it, 7-0? I think we're supposed to do this show of hands. All right, item number four, ZBA 24-27, East Harris and West Beauregard, Single Member District Number Three, Harry Thomas, a request for approval, a five-foot setback along Beauregard Avenue in lieu of the 25-foot setback for a double-frontage lot at the corner of East Harris and West Beauregard.
There we go. Ray Lineberry, planner, and this is East Harris and West Beauregard. This little triangle of a property. It is .374 acres, District Three, Harry Thomas. It's in the Fort Concho East neighborhood. It is zoned RM1 and the request is for a five-foot front yard setback in lieu of the 25 because there's a double frontage. Um, we consider Harris a, a frontage and then Beauregard a frontage. So instead of having 25 foot on both sides, they are requesting a five-foot setback along Other side, okay. So we mailed out 16 notifications, we've received zero in favor, zero in opposition. So the city staff analyzed this and the shape of the lot is, I might go back one more. The shape of the lot makes it very different. Um, actually, I might go forward one. So they recently replatted, um, into two lots and if you, this is a typical home footprint on here and if you notice this back corner is five feet exactly away. So, um, it would be a smaller home if we had to move that 25 foot. So staff feels that they meet all the necessary criteria, um, the shape of the lot is different, it is a double frontage. So with that, staff is recommending approval. With that, is there any questions?
Any questions from the Board? Thank you, Ray. Open it up to public comment.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Blake with the Building Engineering and Surveying. Like I say, I represent, uh, Mr. Feist on this. Uh, I believe this does present a particular geometric hardship and, uh, that 25-foot setback, because there's not an alley, really, that would create a situation where you couldn't fit a house on that lot, so that's why we're asking for the five-foot setback there. That's just the typical, uh, lot dimensions that Mr. Feist had, so we kind of threw them on there so you could see. He'll have to make some slight modifications on that particular lot, but that's just, like I say, just his standard, um, house layout, just thrown on there so you could have an idea of what you're seeing there. Questions or?
Frontage is facing Harris?
Right.
I think the frontage is, is it facing Harris or Beauregard?
Yeah. A lot's been there baking for a long time. Been there forever.
It's because it's so weird.
Uh, any questions from Mr. Willie? Thank you, Blake.
All right, thank you.
Any more public comment? Being none, I'm going to close public comment. All right, Board?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I have a quick question, sorry. Does, in the past, we've had fence line discussions of, for having to drop it down to four feet to get a certain way, does that affect this at all?
Essentially, that, um, that five-foot building setback line would mean if you put a fence on that line, it would have to meet that four-foot height. If you put it one foot behind it, then it's able to be a six-foot fence and that's just something we'll make sure that, uh, Mr. Feist is available, is, is aware of. And so essentially, you're saying, okay, that 20, if, if this case is approved, that 25-foot front yard now becomes a five-foot front yard along Beauregard.
I didn't know that. Thank you.
Is that a back, that's a backyard, right? Because the front
Double frontage.
The way we're understanding it is the front is on Harris.
That is true. The front of the house will be on Harris, but since our zoning ordinance looks at these lots as they're sided by two streets, as it has two front yards
Double frontage.
The request is not to remove one as a front yard. The request is to change it from a 25-foot front yard setback to a five-foot front yard setback, which is, which is a numerical thing that can be changed, where designation of front yard cannot be changed under the zoning ordinance.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you. Any more? Okay, we have a motion for approval. We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Next item. Division Report, number five.
Yes, sir. Uh, after just over a year, we have, uh, recategorized the Planning Manager position to become the, uh, Planning and Development Administrator. Uh, we have posted that position as a city and within one week, we've had over 15 applicants to that position. And so we're very, feeling very good about the position change and the description change and we feel very confident that in the next, um, month to six weeks, that we'll have a new staff member joining us, um, as a Planning and Development Administrator. So that'd be great news that our planning division will have, uh, some very good leadership at that point to continue to do the great things that our, our staff is doing currently. Uh, the other thing that we're working on in planning, other than a lot of things, uh, one of them is an evaluation of the open structure map extension. There's been two requests to extend the map out to part of the Paul Anne neighborhood and so we are going to be bringing forward to Planning Commission some images and some thoughts about what those impacts would be, uh, to a portion of that neighborhood. One of the items that, that we're particularly looking at are when we decide or when the, the developer decides to not, uh, put in alleyways, which we all know is an additional cost to developers, but that's become a trend over the last 20 to 30 years to not have alleyways because our trash is now picked up on the front, utilities are out in the front yard and so forth. Well, that takes away an option for homeowners to have a carport in the back and so the only place to have a carport is in the front. Sorry about that. So in those situations, does it make sense to have an open structure availability in those front yards? But then the, really the second question is, is it more than just a map extension? Is it really about what does that open structure look like? And we have current, uh, we have very specific language in our ordinance currently and that's going to be a question that we ask to our planning commissioners, which ultimately is decided by City Council if that map extension happens or if there's a language change of what those structures could look like. But just want to let you know that's on our radar.
How does that override restrictions on the subdivision?
So if there are deed restrictions, it would not affect deed restrictions whatsoever. Those are completely separate, those are, you know, those civil action items, not a city action item.
I mean, if they call for four sides of brick or something, the structures, any structures or things like that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
If, if the deed restrictions, uh, call for any structure to like to have brick, four sides of brick, things like that, that wouldn't apply to this?
Well, the
That's a look goes.
The deed restrictions apply to that lot. The city does not enforce those deed restrictions, but then the developer or some third party could take that person to task if they didn't build it to their deed restrictions. But that would not be a city enforcement item.
But you would have requirements for the design of the carport?
We would have design requirements that currently are in our ordinance
Okay.
Which really have a lot to do with the shape of the roof and how it meets the primary structure.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is that it? Well, the Division Report, how quick is that going to come up? How soon?
We're going to show some images and have a short discussion if time allows. This Planning Commission, we have a very heavy schedule, so we may push that item to September, uh, just because we have a very heavy schedule and I'd rather us take the time looking at the, the real cases instead of, uh, potential future cases, but it is out there on the table.
Okay, thank you. Item number six, public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the, to us and begin by stating their name and address or, or single member district number. Please limit all remarks to less than three minutes. Any public comment? No public comment. Next, uh, item number seven, next meeting agenda. The next regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustments scheduled to begin at 1:30 PM on Monday, September the 9th in City Hall East Mezzanine Meeting Room. Item number eight, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Staff.